Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 12th Borough Council Meeting of Carlisle. In this evening with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by-
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, yesterday was Veterans Day across the US. And I wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize those veterans that live in our borough. One that we're lucky enough to serve on council with, our staff members that are veterans, our police, fire, and EMS members that are veterans, and all those in our community and across the state who have served. We want to thank them for their service, and I wanted to take a moment tonight for us to reflect on the sacrifices that they have made. Thank you very much, and now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Ramsey. And now, Madam Secretary, if we could have the roll call.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Ms. Fulham-Winston?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Ms. Landis?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
Ms. Delmay? Mr. Spear? Thank you.
Right, it appears a forum is present. Moving on through our agenda, we have a presentation by our friend, Mr. Glenn White, Executive Director of the Downtown Carlisle Association. Mr. White, the floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having me. Just kind of want to give you an update as to everything that's going to be happening in the next month and a half. There's been a lot of things been going on, of course, with COVID. There's been a lot of those things have a- Have changed the way they look, and we have been trying to really encourage and support our downtown businesses and making sure that they have what they need to get through the holiday season. Of course, you know, we do a lot of promotions and- And cooperation with merchants, and then our own special events to get people feed on the street kind of thing. Most of you, if not all of you, are involved with the Carlisle Can Project. And one of the biggest things that's going to be coming up with that is a shop safe, learn safe campaign that the college has spearheaded. And of course, everyone on those calls have been involved with that. Of course, the borough has been taking a lead role in that, and the Downtown Carlisle Association has been take- Just taking a lead role along with the Chamber and pretty much everyone else. There's going to be a press conference held on Wednesday, November the 18th, that I'm sure pretty much everyone is invited to. And at that press conference, we're going to be asking the downtown to sign onto a community compact, which- Encourage the wearing of masks when people are working in their stores and shopping in their stores. This is a program and compact that was devised and offered by President Margie Ensign from the college. So kudos to her for thinking ahead. I think the biggest thing is with the students coming back in the springtime, or at least half- For the beginning and half for the end of that semester, we really want to ensure that the students are coming into a low location when they do go out and shop, because it's something that the college is encouraging them to actually do. Ensuring that we are safe and ensuring we are providing them a safe environment to actually come in and shop in. One of the things I did notice on the consent agenda is a part of this is going to be new street banners. They're going to be, actually, they're in the, they're in, they're in Public Works hands right now, ready to be going up. And then also with this compact is there was masks made, their black masks, say Carlisle Can on them. And on the other side, they say shop safe, learn safe. And we're going to be giving five of those out to every downtown merchant and office on the first floor. If anyone needs any more, we'd be able to give more out for those. So probably look forward to seeing this, and probably by the end of next week, it should be in full force, rolled out across the down, the downtown. We do want to encourage people outside of the downtown to actually be doing this too. So we are going to be work, just working with the Chamber to get those out to the other outside of downtown merchants. Small Business Saturday is going to be on Thursday, November the, actually, we're having a press conference with the Chamber. And of course, everyone is invited. We're going to be having a press conference on Thursday, November the 19th, down at the square. And just going backwards here, the Shop Safely press conference is going to be down at the square, too. Working with the Chamber again, and working with the borough, our big mantra this year is think big, shop small. There's a lot of things going to be going into every dollar that a down, that a person can spend at a downtown store, or even restaurant. We are doing a challenge this year, too. The Chamber and Downtown Carlisle Association are doing a challenge. We're challenging everyone to buy at least two Christmas gifts at a downtown store. That could even include a gift certificate to a restaurant that you would give a person. Of course, you don't have to stop at two, you can go up to more, but that is what we are really looking for. One of the things we're folding into this is again, how safe and clean it is to shop in downtown Carlisle. We really want to make sure that people feel sick, feel secure, especially with the upswing in COVID cases. We are concerned, we need to make sure that this holiday retail season is as profitable as possible, but also as clean as possible. Of course, we know, you know, the first quarter of any new year is a very tight timeframe for merchants. So we really need to make sure that we're able to get them to get some fun, get some funding put back into their accounts from the hardships they've had the past nine months, trying to get them through the first quarter of the next year or two. And then the last thing I wanted to chat about was if Santa Claus comes to town, that's going to be the one event that is going to have the most change to it. Of course, we're not able to do the Christmas parade as we have done in the past. We are trying to rescue portions of that to at least give the memories of the holiday season, even during these hard times. I did put in a re-request to have the proper procedures given to me. We're going to ask if we can have a fire truck bring in Santa Claus this year. I don't know if the fire truck would like to do an actual route around some of the neighborhoods, but we definitely wanted him to be showcased around driving through downtown. We're going to have him stop at the square, jump off of the fire truck, just do a verbal cue to light the tree and to light the lights down on the square. We are going to be doing pictures with Santa and how we're going to be doing those with the CDC guidelines is Jim and Karen Griffith, owners of Creative Palooza. They found an antique sleigh, and they're refinishing it now. We're going to put it up on a stage and put some skirting around the stage, do some little velvet rope kind of thing around the stage. Santa's going to be wearing a mask. The families will be able to stand in front of the velvet rope, at least 10 feet away from Santa. Anyone standing in line is going to be at least 10 feet away from one another. But we're still going to try to ensure people can get those, those pictures with Santa Claus. They're not going to be able to touch him or give him anything, so we're encouraging people to write their Christmas list down, and we're going to have it, be able to drop it into a special Christmas mailbox down on the square. We're going to be doing the carriage rides, only the families who come down together can get into the carriage rides. And one of the things we're going to be needing to ask for that, and I'm going to have to ask Council, I don't know if we're able to get it into the agenda today, but we're needing three spaces again down for that. Hopefully, we'll be able to work with you on that. But we are going to be doing Zoom Santa Claus meetings this year also. I'm going to be doing, getting a few Santa Clauses from around town and setting them up on Zoom and having some people work with the Charles Bruce Foundation to sign them up so they can meet with Santa virtually. If there's some people who are having trouble with internet, or they may not have it at home, we're going to be working with the library to allow them to go into there to actually have their virtual Zoom meeting with Santa. Along with that, we'll be doing our Christmas ornament again. Phil George is drawing the Christmas ornament. He's done such a great job this past year doing other downtown stores and restaurants, and- That's it. Just kind of looking forward a little bit. We are planning Ace Fest. Be, we're going to expect those to be spaced out so much that we won't have an issue with that. But we're still, of course, in the planning stages for that. Again, we don't want to lose this holiday, this holiday season. And hopefully, wearing masks and cleaning our hands and social distancing, we will be able to pull that line down again, rather than how we're keep saying it, keep going up. We need to kind of turn the curve on that. So- Any questions? And thank you very much for having given me the time. Any questions?
Absolutely, Glenn. Thank you very much. Where can folks go to get all this information? It's got to be in one place, right?
We're going to be able to go to lovecarlisle.com. One of the things we didn't say about the Small Business Saturday was we're going to come out with a new gift giving guide that's going to have products in from the different stores. You know, kind of gifts for her, gifts for him, gifts for them, gifts for the office, letting people see exactly what is in the source. Now, it's going to be actually a print version and virtual also. So yes, you can also always go to lovecarlisle.com and get that information.
My favorite website, lovecarlisle.com. Any, any questions for Glenn about all this exciting activity here in downtown coming up? Yeah, we're, I agree with you, Deb. This is exciting. So yeah, we look forward to it, and you will let us know if we can be helpful, right?
Of course, of course, of course.
If I may, Mayor?
You may.
I, I know, Glenn, you did put your request in today, and I know Chief Snyder and I had a conversation on that. Because of COVID-19, we'll need a COVID plan for, for Santa Claus and so forth. So we need to have a, you know, clear understanding of what that looks like before we'll be able to. So put in the special event application like you typically do, along with your request for those metered spaces. And we, we can address it then.
Thank you very, very much.
We do aim to please around here. Any, any other comments on this? Will we let Glenn go?
I'll just say one quick thing, because actually, I was going to bring this up during my report later, but you know, Glenn kind of said it all. I mean, I can't reiterate enough, like, to shop downtown this year. Like, out of all the years, I mean, we say it, but like, and Glenn said it, you know, in a great way, and there's lots of other things going on, but like, I make gift baskets, and I go to all the different restaurants and stores and things like that. And I kind of just figure out, like, if I don't know what someone wants, like, they always like food, so, you know, like, go to the farmer's market. There's all sorts of different options, and there's so much downtown. So please, just, I know you can't necessarily buy a PS5, because I can't buy one for my kid downtown. But other than that, like, you can kind of get everything else that you need. So please just take the time, call the stores if you're unsure, like, just take the extra time. I just ordered some stuff at Whistle Stop. Jeff was great. So please, listen to Glenn and just enjoy our town, because it's special.
Listen to Glenn. Absolutely. Listen to Glenn, call them, or even better, go to their websites and see what they have, or their Facebook pages. Our businesses downtown have very robust Facebook presences, so take advantage of that, too. And maybe you can order stuff online and go and then pick it up curbside. Why not? Okay. All right, enough of our commercial. Thank you, Glenn, very much. We will move on to opportunity for citizens to be heard. Members of the public and visitors may address Borough Council at this time on specific issues of concern relating to borough government. Do we have anyone either in Borough Hall or with us in the Zoom that has a concern or a question or comment? Going once, going twice. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public, they request an item be removed from the consent agenda, and it will be considered separately. So first, I'll ask my council colleagues, is there an item that anyone would like to be removed from the consent agenda and set aside? I don't see anybody. Is there anybody with us on the Zoom call or in Borough Hall that would like a similar action to take place? I don't believe we have anyone that wants to do that. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Do we have a second?
Second?
Seconded by Deb Fulham-Winston. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And if you were here for anything on Pages one, two, and three, that item has been dealt with, and you may stay with us, or you may slip out, whichever you prefer. Moving on to the regular agenda, there are no table continued recurring items. Moving on to reports from elected officials. Under Mayor's report, yes, Small Business Saturday proclamation. So we're going to hear a lot about small businesses, and this is something that we do annually here in the borough. And I just have a few brief remarks about the proclamation. Bear with me. This proclamation declares November 28th as Small Business Saturday in the borough of Carlisle. And it celebrates our local merchants and shop owners and the contributions they make to the Carlisle region's economy and community. As was stated, the borough's small businesses make a profound impact on the community, and we encourage everyone to support, to support small businesses in the wake of this global health crisis. Our business owners, who are also our friends and neighbors, are working harder than ever before and continue to adjust throughout this pandemic. However, they need all of our help. With the holidays fast approaching, let's band together and recognize our small business owners who have invested so heavily into our community. Thank you. Now, moving into reports from committee, budget, and finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council approve the license agreement between Union Fire Company Number One and the Borough of Carlisle with respect to the installation of video surveillance cameras in the West Locust Avenue parking lot and associated electrical work.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schultz motion to approve a license agreement between the borough and Union Fire Company Number One. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Ramsey. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
I move that council approve a reallocation of existing available debt not to exceed $2 million from the water fund to the sewer and stormwater funds for their use towards capital projects. Such reallocation would include a reallocation of future debt payments on the debt transferred.
Deputy Mayor Schultz makes a motion for reallocation of existing debt. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Public Works?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. I would ask, I have one item. I'd ask council to authorize the mayor to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form for a connection to the borough's sanitary sewer system from the proposed 7-Eleven convenience store to be located at 1003 South Hanover Street.
Thank you. Ms. Fulham-Winston makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And that completes my report.
All right. Next up is new business. We didn't have anybody that wanted to address this about an issue before, but I always like to try again. Is there, is there such a person? Any member of council have any new business? All right. Let's move into reports from council and staff. I will just call on you as I see you on my screen. So that means that you, Mr. Ramsey, are first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item tonight, and Glenn and Brenda touched on the majority of this. But again, it's worth repeating for anybody watching or who will watch this back, please, 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 wear a mask, wash your hands, practice, practice social distancing. I know, I know it gets old hearing those things, but the numbers are totally out of control in our county, in our state, and in our community. And we need to do everything we can to try to get things back under control, because if we don't, you know, then we run the risk of wondering why businesses aren't open, restaurants aren't open, schools aren't open. So a lot of this is under our control, while we can't control everything about the virus. And I know it's frustrating for folks, and I know folks are tired of, of being, you know, at home or not being able to visit their loved ones. But the longer we ignore the facts and the science, the longer this will continue. So please, 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 support our businesses by, by wearing masks, practice social distancing, and washing your hands. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Very wise words. I believe I missed someone that wanted to make a comment. Wanda Hunter, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, please proceed.
I've been thinking about the intersection. I know my famous intersection there at the Y. I travel that road a lot, and coming past the Y on Southwest Street, going towards Walmart, when you make a left turn there, that road is very bumpy. It just shakes your car. Regardless what speed you're going, you know, because you're making a left-hand turn, and you're, it's just rough, it's very rough. So I was wondering if there's something could be done temporarily to smooth that area out so that you don't have all of that, you know, activity, you know, in the car. It could be, you know, my wheels might get out of line or something like that. Like I say, I'm making a left-hand turn, so I'm not going fast. It's just that it's very, very bumpy and uneven. So if any of you come down Southwest Street, make that turn onto Walla Bottom, you understand what I'm saying. It's, it's just very, very, very rough. That's, and that's my favorite intersection that I'm, you know, looking forward to getting some type of traffic control there. But for now, just something to make it, make the road smooth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda. I do know that we do have a paving schedule, and Mark, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can you give us any information on that?
Sure, Mayor. We'll reach out to PennDOT. That is a PennDOT intersection, and we'll let them know that, that council received comments from the public about the condition of the road and ask them if they can do something about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, that is a state, a state road, so we will turn to our friends in PennDOT. Okay. I don't believe there's anybody else that wants to be recognized. If there is, we'll take care of that later, but we'll move on. Deb Fulham-Winston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, I would like to express my deep appreciation and thanks to all of the members of the Cumberland County Bureau of Elections, who did an outstanding job under crazy circumstances, and not only their work, but also the work of all of the, I assume, hundreds of volunteers. By the time you talk about poll watchers and judges of election and all the other folks who have made our election so wonderfully smooth, even in these crazy times. And I think people don't realize just how much preparation it takes for that to happen. And we are a very lucky county to have such an outstanding group of people working for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, well said. Jeff Stube?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
Sure, a couple, a couple of things. One, to, to address what Deb Fulham-Winston just, just mentioned also. Having been an observer last Wednesday while they were canvassing mail-in ballots, I've mentioned this to others, and I think this was an important exchange that I had with the, the observer on behalf of the Republican Party. As the morning began and the county staff were counting the votes, he turned to me and said, do you know why we're here? And I said to, to see these folks do their job and do it effectively, accurately, and efficiently. And, and he said, yes, and so we can go out and tell everybody that this was a fair and accurate count. So I want to underscore that. There's, at this level, those who are seeing how the work is being done in reality and not making up things to, to hit headlines, we know it's a fair and accurate count. And I thought that was a poignant exchange in light of what we've seen in, in the headlines lately and tweets. On from there, I'm happy to, to report that we're moving closer and closer to a date for the Town Hall on Racism. We are going to be looking at having that in the middle of January, which of course is Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. At the mayor's suggestion, we, we will be coordinating that with the MLK Commemorative Committee's efforts. And it looks like it's likely then to fall on January 16th. We still have some details to, to iron out. And I'll be having actually a call with one of the possible overflow venues tomorrow and hope to have more to report as we go forward. But it looks like we should all pencil that into our, to our calendars on, on January 16th. More details to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Thank you for the update. Mr. Hicks?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just a couple of things. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey, for helping us remember about veterans. And I was really encouraged to be able to be part of our veterans memorial service this week. It was a rare time for us to be thankful in a bipartisan way for the sacrifice that our veterans have made. I lost my best friend in college who was a major in the US Marine Corps. He was serving as a police officer in Santa Monica. We lost him in 2005. And yeah, it's a- It's a meaningful time. I also- I'm sorry.
Take your time, Joel.
I'd like to thank everybody who- I'd like to thank everybody who participated today. Our first collaboration with the city of Carlisle. We had an amazing representation. I, I lost count at 20. I think we might've hit above that. But we spent about an hour talking about our challenges. And specifically as we're addressing climate action planning. We had folks from our planning commissions. We had elected officials and we had staff members that were able to identify several areas that I think we're going to continue to be able to collaborate. I spent a few minutes after most other folks left the meeting. And I think we've identified maybe four specific areas, including community engagement, transportation planning, economic growth and energy provisioning that I'm looking forward to continue to be able to engage with our partners. I will share more specifics as I work with their staff on those issues. I think I, it, it was remarkable to me. I think the two most important things that I discovered in, in our partnership was, A, that they have taken perhaps more aggressive action than we are, our greenhouse gas emissions and are taking a little bit of a strategy of, of go big early and then fall back if you need to. So they have a greenhouse gas neutral requirement for 2037. We're still holding firm at a 80% reduction by 2050. And I think we have a lot to learn from their experience because they did realize that they had to pull back a bit on their ambitions. Okay? They, they had initially tried to go to carbon neutral at 2030. So I think we have a lot to learn from them in, in that area. And then, you know, lastly, it, it, it was remarkable to me to see how similar we were in terms of our relative emissions across our transportation, our commercial and industrial sectors. And with residential housing, we were, we were literally within 2% of, of our emissions coming from each of these sectors. So there's more similarity, more similarity than our names in, in working together. And, and I look forward to continue to be able to report out the, the lessons that, they're about a year ahead of us in the process. So we, we may have the advantage of learning a little bit more from them than they do from us. But I think it's a great initiative that we're starting. And hopefully we can build this out. We already started talking about maybe some other sustainability issues and challenges that, that may be ripe for continued collaboration. So I look forward to, to working and thank you for taking the time. So many of you, most of you on here are on the call today and I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Joel, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. And if there's any press on the call today, Joel will be having immediate availability after this meeting. And he'll be more than happy to tell you about our exciting initiative with Carlisle UK, which as far as I know is the first of its kind, certainly in central Pennsylvania and most definitely in Cumberland County, where we're working directly with our counterpart in England to deal with climate mitigation and strategies around resiliency. So it's a very exciting thing and the press should learn more about it, I think. Okay. Brenda Landis.
Thanks. Most of the things that I was going to cover were covered. Thanks to the Election Bureau. Thanks, you know, for, for help, for Glenn bringing up shopping locally. And thanks to Counselor Ramsey for, and, and Counselor Hicks for acknowledging Veterans Day. The only thing I have to offer is that also this week, every week right around Veterans Day is also the Marine Corps Birthday. And it's, my dad was Marine. And so this is near and dear to my heart. So happy 245th Marine Corps Birthday. That's it.
Thank you very much. Espar.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Apologies on being a little late today. But I really echo all of the gratitude that folks have already shared about the incredible work of the Elections Office as well as all of the things going on. It's really amazing to get to learn so much from all of you at this local level, doing so much. I'm really grateful for that. Some updates on the Dickinson campus side of things. Maybe you all have heard, but I think it's important to have communication and transparency. There's been a decision that students will be welcome in the spring. The freshmen and sophomores will return on January 25th until spring break. And then after, during spring break, the cohort of students on campus will switch out. So the juniors and seniors will arrive once spring break is over. And then they will finish out the school year on campus. Other folks who have gotten exceptions such as myself to be on campus this semester will likely have those again. So some students more than this semester will be returning to Carlisle and I'll be working really hard to get them to be supporting our local businesses and doing all that important work so that we can have reciprocity in our community. And I just wanted to express belated and heartfelt gratitude to all of you who've taken time to meet with me in the last couple of months as I try to figure out kind of a direction for this amazing opportunity as ambassador that I have, that I have this semester. And I'm starting to water and try to help the seeds of a civic art project grow as something that I'll be working on for the spring. I think especially in this moment after the election and in the pandemic, so many different crises going on. The arts are a really powerful way to bring joy back into our communities and to kind of reexamine our shared roots and our interdependence as we live in this community together. So if anyone listening or anyone on the call right now is interested in trying to make that happen or wants to share any knowledge of similar incredible initiatives that have existed in the past, I would love to talk with you. So that's pretty exciting. And yeah, I think that's it for me, but thank you.
Thank you, Espar. Always good to have your energy. All right. Now we'll turn to staff and our Borough Manager, Susan Armstrong. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just remind everyone that we start our budget hearings on Tuesday, November 17th at 6:00 PM. And our staff has put a lot of work into the, the presentation as far as the budget draft that's going to be before council for action. So we encourage individuals to attend that meeting virtually or in person. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Solicitor Brenneman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, sir. Chief Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no other comments for tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Public Works, Mark Mallory.
I have nothing further for council this evening. Thank you.
All right. Stephanie Taylor, Public Information.
Do you have something really quick? You'll hear more about it tomorrow, but we're going to do another test of our Code Red system. So if anyone's listening, isn't sure if they're signed up for our emergency alerts, they can go to our website and click Code Red at the top and sign up.
Great.
And then they'll get the call next Friday, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Our Assistant Borough Manager, Owen Snyder.
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Community Development, Mike Skelly.
Gave it in council. I have nothing to offer.
Right. Andrea Kraus, Parks and Recreation.
Hello. I don't have anything either. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Richard Dudey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Chief Landis, CPD.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report.
All right. We're on a roll here. Tom Hamilton, HR. You may have stepped away, but that's okay. All right. Seeing how nothing left further on the agenda, nothing further before council be considered, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that too.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.